Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a pure republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get roll calls here?
Here?
Here.
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 Here, thank you very much for that. We are at the first citizen and community group comments. Do I have any online? And I have no papers. All right. Okay, we are at the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read it. Is there anything you'd like to pull out or to talk about before we ask for a motion? No? Okay, can I get a motion on the floor, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The first and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Department Committee reports. Do any of you wish to speak on your groups? Jerry, we'll start with you.
So Arts Commission met and I just wanted to throw this out there, something to think about. Twenty twenty-five is one hundred and twenty years of Estacada. Bev, if anybody wants the the list of stuff that Bev from the Arts Commission sent me, I can forward that email, but it's some really great stuff, something that we can think about for some events and stuff we can think about for doing. And she proposed doing uh doing it every five years, doing something like this, you know, just in a events that celebrate Estacada and the founding of Estacada, you know, on a regular basis, semi-regular basis, like every five years. But there's a really good list of stuff. I've got uh I've talked to, again, Parks and Recs brought, or not Parks and Rec, Arts Commission brought it up. And I talked to the downtown Estacada Commission during their meeting about it, maybe doing something for one hundred and twenty. But it's just something, planting the seeds. We've got a few months before we get to twenty twenty-five, but I just wanted to plant the seeds. I think it would be worthwhile to do something at one hundred and twenty and not wait to one twenty-five, but just get the ball rolling and get, you know, get something started. I think it was May of nineteen oh five is when the city of Estacada was established. But, you know, something to, and it was, it was, it was a great idea. It really, it really hit, you know, struck well with me and I think it's something we should be thinking about as not just the city council, but all of our, all of our commissions that do events do stuff for one twenty and possibly, you know, and then once, definitely one twenty-five. So.
All right.
Yeah, so I met with Traffic and Public Safety and they they went through an array of things, but to highlight the more important of the things. Chief Mendoza is going to come to council once he, once the new contract is signed with the city. And he's going to present to us here what exactly our services are, what it looks like, what it, the new official cost, and then what it would take as far as what kind of budget would be required to get extra officers or an Estacada badged officers or uniformed bike or whatever we decided to do on that. He's going to present options on that specifically, but he wanted, he asked to wait until he had specific relative contract information as they're currently negotiating the new one, I guess. So then we spoke on, they just kind of reviewed their budget and all their, their targets for this year and the things that they've been going over. And then there's a big one, which if rather than council business, I'll just bring it to you now. You have an opportunity as a council to do something to help our community now. We sat with Dawn on the traffic of public safety and we asked Dawn directly, what's the holdup on speed bumps or speed humps, whichever way we went, we've provided information on a budget, what they cost, where to get them. And went through the whole rundown and it's a real simple solution. Dawn said even if he had them, he couldn't install them because we don't have a code. There is no city code. It got missed on trap, on speed bumps or speed humps or anything of the, of the nature. So we have an opportunity right now, which I would like to, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct city staff to come up with a code for speed bumps and speed humps for the community.
I like where you're going with that. Can we do that in the consent agenda? Uh, can we make the motion, the consent agenda, or should we move this down to council business and vote on that?
I think since we'd have to bring the language back, you can just tell us to come up with it and we can do an investigation, look at what other people are doing, bring it back at a future meeting. It would be on the agenda for that. So members of the public that that would want to discuss it would have that opportunity.
And is there a way we can expedite that slightly? Because, you know, sometimes things get bumped to the back of the list, but let's get that as the important item on there. Would that work for you?
Yeah, it was just, it was just pointed out that there's only two locations outside of the school, which is private. And then a former city staff member outside of that in town, there is no speed bumps or no speed bump or any sort of hump. And we have the ability to do it according, coming straight from Dawn. It's just a matter of he can't just go placing them. So he needs a procedure. So I need to, I need the councils' support in this so that we can better protect our community. Let's become proactive rather than reactive and get ahead of issues.
All right. I thank you for climbing up that tree. That's a good one. We do need some safer streets out there. I hear the guards all the time. It's becoming more and more of an issue. So it's time we addressed it. I'm glad you brought it forward and thank you for that. And like they said, they will put something together, bring it back to us and we'll go from there. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I was unable to attend the DI meeting, but I fortunately was able to watch it on YouTube, which everybody can watch every meeting, which is great. One thing that they're working on is a community engagement survey and they are going to put together questions and they would like council feedback so that we're all on the same page of what questions we want answered with the community. They are still putting together and modifying their community group outreach list and working on a youth council. They discussed our plans to have a youth member on every committee, which is great. And then they're also looking to work on a youth drug abuse prevention campaign. So that should be nice.
Okay, thank you. Fine. Anything else? Jerry?
Uh, yeah, I have two, Parks and Rec and School Board. So Parks and Rec, they they have just, there are two new commissioners that started. And Elaine is going to be doing the training for the new commissioners once the commission is full. It's not full yet. Uh, they approved the new chair and it's going to continue to be Vincent Bellomo. And they are wrapping up the art in the park planning. Let's see, cleanup day. So cleanup of the Ivy and the Ranger Woods. There's an organization named Solved will be partnering up with the Parks and Rec Commission. This is a final steps caring proposed, getting disposal of the Ivy. So they're looking into doing that in early June. They're also doing the wayfinding signs for the parks. They had recommendations to modify a couple of signs. So these are just the little signs that are going to go up around town that just gives, you know, anybody who's like, you know, tourists that come in, you know, you can go this way to Timber Park, this way to White Creek, et cetera. Mission applications, there's now three openings. So we just had the recent approval of bumping up the commissioners from five to seven. So they had three applicants and they approved all three applicants. And they want to put out a survey to the public to see what type of parks they want to see in the future. And the sprint into spring update, they might need to reroute the course to prevent any school closures. And I think they've been working with city staff on that. So that is Parks and Rec. Uh, for School Board, we've got this week is May break. So some capital improvements are underway. The, the mini split units are going in the middle school and high school, also some grounds keeping work will be happening as the school district prepares for spring, summer sports as well as graduation prep. So they'll be cutting back, trimming up some bushes and stuff as they get ready for graduation. The kindergarten connection that happens every year where a new family is coming into the district and want to enroll their students, they had fifty-eight students show up for River Mill Elementary, thirty-six for Clackamas River Elementary. So the school district looks at these numbers and then they times them by two. And that usually gives the school district a good idea of how many incoming kindergarteners there's going to be in the district for this coming year. And so they are anticipating one hundred and sixty kindergarteners to come in for fall. And that is the largest number the district has seen. So they're really trying to anticipate and accommodate for the growth. The Road to Success Program will be moving to the vacant building on Main Street. The, they're changing the name of the program and the program is going to be known as the Deep Creek Learning Academy. And then lastly, Superintendent Carpenter wanted to extend his heartfelt thanks to all those who have worked hard supporting the school bond by advocating the needs of improving aging, aging facility, facilities, accommodating growth as well as keeping up with advancing technology. He also addressed at length the security threat at the beginning of the month, if you're sure we all heard about it. He praised the rapid response of Clack, Clackamas County and the investigation of Clackamas County. He also did bring up some weak areas that some gaps in the system as far as security. And so they're hoping that should the bond pass, that could help mitigate any potential threats in the future. So that is the School Board report.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. City Managers Report.
Little slideshow there. One thing I do realize I forgot to put in this is a little update on Main Street and it's going to get a little messy out here this week as they're digging up and repairing. If you've noticed, every time they try to repair, uh, make repairs on Main Street, it, there's very deep clay underneath the road. And so then we, we repair it, dig it down, repair it, and it still tends to get the dips and the little hole, you know, kind of almost sinkholes that go in there. So they're working on that this week. It, if you can take a different route, that would be probably preferred. Um, it's because it's going to get a little bit worse before it gets better. And then if they can finish that up this week, next week, they'll start paving at the beginning of the week. If the weather holds, the road will have to be closed while they're paving, but they, they'll try to, the plan is to do it block by block. So we'll keep watching those updates. You can sign up for updates on the city website. But just wanted to give a heads up, it's going to get a little little messy out there this week. So, but I appreciate the contractor and the Travis and Dustin who are leading the crews out there. They've been doing, in my opinion, an excellent job of communicating with people, communicating with us, solving problems, keeping the road open to the greatest degree possible. And so we're kind of getting close to the home stretch. So, oh, you have a question?
Well, I did. I have a couple of questions I want to ask you while we have you on the hot seat here. This is just more maintenance questions for prior council meetings we've had. I know we talked about the the wastewater capacity on our plant, existing plant from nineteen sixty-five. I brought it up twice. I haven't heard anything yet, but I was wondering, do you have those numbers of what it was meant to take in nineteen sixty-five when it was built?
What it was meant in, no, I do not have those numbers. I will write that down specifically.
Let's try to get that out of the more upcoming. And then the splash pad.
Yes.
Where are we at on that?
All right. So we oops, we are Dawn, Public Works Director, is having the water line tapped to provide a two-inch water service to Wade Creek Park. So we'll get that done. We're kind of doing this in phases because it's, it's you would think it's a simple splash pad, but it's more complicated than than I would have thought. So there was no two-inch water line to Wade Creek Park. So that water tap is getting done in this fiscal year. We have all the parts that, and Dawn's having some engineering done so that we don't get surprised on the elevations. Because if you've noticed, if we're putting it in the front of Wade Creek Park, the, the lawn kind of humps up a little bit and we've had this experience before where we think, oh, just put it out there. And then it, by the time he gets done excavating, it's a lot more in depth. So that is moving forward. I don't have a finished deadline date for that, but it is, we're pushing it forward to get that.
That going to be this year?
It, it should be this summer. It won't be at the beginning of the summer, but it should be this summer. We will wrap that thing up.
All right. Final question for you. SDC is the comparison. Adding the three cities that we talked about, Happy Valley, Lake Oswego.
Yes, Kurt, our, our engineer is working on the SDC update and I do need to get that chart adding those. I'm not sure if you remember, if, is he coming to do a presentation on that, I think, at the time? Okay. So, so our engineer, Kurt McLeod, will come and explain what the update is looking like. We put out, we had to put out a notice to people who've asked for to be updated if we're changing SDC. So we've put out that notice and then yes, we were going to add, because we had a, a list of most of the Clackamas County cities, but there was some that was missing. So that is in process.
Okay, great. And then last but not least, we've had a couple of events lately, the school being one with the shutdown and some assailants that had robbed a house further out outside of the city limits, but at the same time, weapons were involved. And I just wanted to know why I wasn't notified, because usually I'm notified first off, not last off. And these occasions, both of them being major, could have been major. I wasn't notified. I had to hear it from other people calling me either the next day or, you know, quite a few hours later. I mean, these are kind of major events. It's like the fire. It's like anything that's ever went on in this town. I usually know so I can be ready when, if the media shows up, if anybody's here, if we have to make a call out. I, I usually get notified. So I was wondering why.
I'm sorry that you did not, I should have called you. I sent, I was sending out email updates during the during the incident that was going on at the school from as much as that I, I had learned, as I was learning, I was sending out email updates. But I should have called you and I am sorry that I did not get a phone call about that. As far as the burglary outside of town, I had not, I don't know anything about that.
I guess it was a pretty big ordeal. There were guns involved and everything else. So it was something that should have stood out on our radar, especially in this area. I'd want to warn people if we've got assailants running around with guns. To me, that's a pretty serious issue.
Yeah, I'll ask Lieutenant Mendoza about that because he does try to keep us updated also if there's something that might put people at risk. That's right. He was here during the school incident. He came in for that along with about thirty other law enforcement officers. But I did not hear an update on any burglary, so I will ask him. And again, I'm sorry, I should have called you instead of just sending the email updates about the school incident.
At least we got it out there.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah. And in the future, is there any kind of procedure that we could get put into place? So regardless of whether it's mayor drink line or somebody else down the road that whoever's in these council seats or whatever, I mean, I think there should definitely be an open line of communication so that of anybody in the community, we could be the ones to at least have a little bit of a know, set, know. I mean, my, my fear would be you're going to start to have vigilante stuff happen. If people take things into their own hands, if people don't feel like they're safe in this community and if they can't get answers and we're picking and choosing when people know what, we're relying on email and that just doesn't seem very modern. I mean, I'd like to see something maybe struck up that's directly like a I don't know, some kind of procedural or something that notify this person, then notify council president, if, if anything like that, to disperse information. I mean.
Or I could send a, we don't, we try not to send vital information over text, but I could send a text, please check your email and there's an incident. At least that way you would have a heads up to check your email and know. And in the case of the school, they were sending out updates, but if you don't have a student in the school, then you wouldn't know. So that's what I was trying to pass information on. But if I were to just, I could just send a text that should give you a heads up, please check your email. Not to be an alarmist, because there was not really risk to the rest of the town. Um, at the, but just so that you would be aware and not caught off guard if somebody asks you about it.
Yeah, but this is like the third or fourth incident now. I think Deputy Bigler actually had to meet with a parent not too long ago that was there were five o'clock in the morning, people speed racing around town with complaints of supposedly somebody drawing a gun, which ended up being fraudulent. But I mean, this is continually happening now. And we're finding out via email way after the fact. And I don't necessarily us, but I mean, I think that the mayor, the one that's going to have to deal with media and things like that should absolutely be in the loop.
But we're all on the same page. So that's good. We appreciate it.
Yeah. And just to clarify that, that report about the firearm was false.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Be false. Yeah.
I, I saw that. I read, I read your email.
And you reported that to Traffic and Public Safety, I think. Yeah. So, okay, thank you for that conversation. I was in the middle of a sentence. I'm going to ask Mendoza about the rob, a robbery that took place. Okay. So just quickly to go through these few slides, Yard Debris Service, we are currently working toward providing curbside yard debris pickup through our garbage provider or garbage service providers. However, if you, there was a page on our previous website that because we said it's back, yard debris, the yard debris box is back a couple of years ago, when we had the self-serve yard debris box down at the wastewater pit. Well, somehow one of our old, our, it was our old website and it has, it reactivated or something. And so it does say, it doesn't say city of Estacada, it says legacy dot city of Estacada. So there's, it's like you're storing it, but somehow people have access to it. So just wanted to clarify that webpage should be removed soon so that it won't be confusing people anymore, but we do not have a bin down there for yard debris and we are working on getting that curbside for people. So sorry about that misinformation. Okay, next slide. Oh, Councilor Ten Bush.
So my, my concern with the yard debris degree, debris program, I want to make sure that it, that it's not, the yard debris isn't just going into a landfill, just like regular garbage does. I would like to see in that program that yard debris go, you know, to mulching, go to, you know, to be repurposed for other stuff, not just, you know, like garbage.
Right. And that would, that would be the, the plan with the actual yard debris service. Right now you can put out an extra can of garbage if you're collecting too much yard debris. And you can put that out. It goes in the garbage and it, there's an extra charge. I think it's eight dollars and something for an extra thirty-two gallon can. But the goal with the program would be curbside pickup and then it would be go to a yard debris recycle. Okay, just wanted to give you a quick update on this. Back in February, we discussed an advanced finance district for the Woodland and Lawrence Water Line because the city put that in. And ahead of development, usually water line will go in with the development and the developer will put those in. This one was put in ahead. It's a benefit to the folks that live to the north. But if any of those properties along there want to develop or if they have an issue with their well and they just want to hook up to the water, and we, we were going to set up an advanced finance district, which is how they, how it regulates how they pay into that for the service that's there, that this, that the city has already paid for. But we found out that our SDC methodology, because we're doing the update, it has a, a path, a different path for assessing and it's called the SDC overlay. So we don't have to set up an advanced finance district. We'll just use the SDC process for when anybody needs to hook onto that. And it will, there's no cost to their property owners along that water line unless they want, need to connect to the water line or if they are going to develop their property, like subdivide their property and, and build. At that point, then they're, they pay into the SDC overlay. And that'll be probably good questions for Kurt when he comes to your meeting in June. While I'm thinking about, there is no meeting on May twenty-seventh because that's Memorial Day. So we have the town hall next Monday and the budget meeting tomorrow night, town hall next Monday, and then you won't have a meeting till June tenth, I think it is. Yeah. Okay. Um, just a couple more. I wanted to share a couple of details on the contract that was in the consent agenda for the it was the, it's three G water treatment plant piping improvements. And so that was approved in the consent agenda. Thank you for that. So what's the difference between the old pipes and the new, new pipes as far as size? That's not a picture of them. That's other pipes that's at the plant, but it's at our plant. So I thought I'd use those. The old pipes are eight inches in diameter with six inch meter and the new pipes that we're installing will be twelve inches with a ten inch meter, which will be able to increase the pump output. And so our goal is to be able to output two million gallons a day with the existing pumps we have. And these extra, these over, oversizing the pipes will help with that. And then how will that help us produce more water is in planning for the future. They are sized to be able to handle when we want to make three million gallons a day. We'll have many other upgrades to do bef, you know, before we get there. And our water rights are only two point six million gallons a day. But as we work toward being able to use reclaimed water, that could bump our, our amount up. So as this is being designed, it's useful for now. It lets us keep using the same pumps that we have, but as we increase the whole plant, these will, these will service that too. So just wanted to I don't know if that clarifies anything. Still a little not an engineer, but wanted to share that. Okay. And then did I have, I think I have another one. Oh, Hillway Connection. So we're ready, going to be ready to advertise for bids. This is the Hillway, Hillway Connection that goes from Hillway across the uh, school property over to Campanella Development and connects into Hillway there. Um, we'll be ready to do that connector. Uh, we're on track to get our DSL and Army Corps permits by the first week of August. A little later than I wanted to, but we're still confident that that can take place. The, yeah, engineering that would be current and Ed are confident that we'll get the in-water work done within the time that they will allow us to do it. So that's moving forward. Okay. And Charity, you might want to, or Counselor Hughes, you might want to weigh in on this, but there is a recommendation from the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, and I wanted to share that with you and you could start thinking about it. The horseshoe pets at Wade Creek Park are going to be revamped to create a fenced area for dogs to be off leash, which I understand that's it's used a lot for that right now anyway. But we're going to freshen it up a bit. And the Parks and Rec Commission voted to name the quote unquote new dog park after Chris Nelson, who passed away last year. Um, she was very, and this is the webpage, the, the Facebook page that she had set up. And she was very active in helping pets in Estacada, helping lost animals be found. However, she wasn't the mayor. There is there was a supposition that she had been the mayor. She actually hadn't been the mayor, but she did a lot for, for lost animals. Um, and so I just wanted to share that was the recommendation. I do have just a couple of concerns because it's a very simple, it's not a it's not a dog park of very much magnitude. And so I don't want it to be disheartening that it's a little dog run and we're you know, naming it in honor of Chris. I feel like might be a little anticlimactic. So just to keep that in mind. And then standard park names in Estacada typically relate to the location. But if you want to discuss this later, or if you want to have Parks and Rec come, or if you want to add anything, Counselor Hughes, you know, we could put it on an agenda.
Yeah, it was just something that, that they discussed and, but I don't think they knew who really, you know, what all Chris Nelson had done and they were going off the recommendation, but yeah, I mean, I'm up for discussing how we can, you know, do something. I think, you know, if we can honor her memory some way, even if it was just like a plaque or something, I don't know. We, I'm open to discussing it. Okay, yeah.
Will you bring back some suggestions of?
Yeah.
I, or I guess it's staff could just go ahead and take care of it if it's nothing, you know, if you're just wanting to go with that recommendation. Because we will need to put up a sign with rules for the dog park and it could be like in memory of Chris Nelson and.
Appropriate there. I like that idea.
The in-memory.
In-memory. Okay. Okay. All right. Fantastic. I think that might have been my last one, except for Peter has a question he wanted to talk to you about regarding business licenses. So.
Yeah. So you have a code section related to occupational tax, which is basically a business tax. It's, it could be more clear. Um, I am interpreting it one way and I wanted to make sure that I am interpreting it the same way that you guys would interpret it because you're entitled to vast deference in your interpretations and I'm not. So five point oh four point oh three oh A says, no person may transact or carry on any such business in the city without first having obtained a certificate of occupation. Therefore, for the current calendar year as herein provided or without complying with any and all applicable provisions of this chapter. Obviously a lawyer wrote that in two thousand and two. So the way that I interpreted that is you're, you cannot conduct business in the city without without paying getting that essentially business license. And so that if there was a business that was carrying on business and hadn't gotten it, that, that in and of itself would be a code violation. Um, and it, it would be for each day that they conducted a business that the code enforcement would be able to cite them. And this isn't theoretical. This is a, this is something that's occurring. And our code enforcement team just really feels like they need more clarity on it. So that was my interpretation that I shared with Melanie. I, I think that's kind of the the intent in what they were trying to get at with drafting, but I just wanted to make sure that what I was thinking is.
I think councils in concurrence with that, I think we're all on the same page as far as how that was written and how you interpreted it. Okay.
So does this, does that include all, any business or is it just brick and mortar businesses? I mean, I mean, is this like, if, if, if somebody's making bracelets at their house and selling them, um.
If they're selling them on the street. Versus selling them from their house.
Yeah. I mean, if they're selling them online, you know, that's my.
Typically you do have to have a business license if you're run, operating a business. Sometimes those are more hobby type of things like, I think what you might be referring to might be more of a hobby. Um, if we, if you are running, operating a business, um, you should have a, a business license. Um, and if it, sometimes I'm not going to say that doesn't run under the radar. If it's, you know, an online thing and nobody really knows what's going on. Um, but should have a business license if a nonprofit, um, is operating somewhere. They do need to have a business license also, but there's no fee for that for a nonprofit. They just, it, um, allows us to make sure that the right occupancy use of that, if they're in a building, that that is correct. Um, and that we know that there's a business there. It goes through the fire district also. Um, so it's just noted. Um, but yeah, if, in a home occupation should have one. And we would, if we found out that somebody was, had a business and didn't have a license and it took them a couple of weeks to get in and fill out their business, we're not going to, we're not going to charge it, you know, be, be sticklers about it. It's for when people are refusing to get a, a license pretty much, you know? If, if somebody was working on it, we would work with them to help them accomplish that.
What does that process look like for enforcement? So when you have people that you don't know who they are, that come into the town and are selling things, food products on the corners. You have no, you don't know who they are. They're selling food that you're taking home and feeding your kids and then somebody gets sick or dies, God forbid. And you don't know, what, what is, what are we going to do to shut that down? Because at some point people just, I, I see them, I haven't seen them recently, but there for a time that were popping up all over town. I'm like, where's this food coming from? Where are these people, where are these people coming from? They're not people from our community doing it. People are coming from, somebody's orchestrating it and they're coming and they're selling food products without anyone knowing who they are. What's that enforcement look like to shut that down when they pop up without a business license?
I have not figured out who is behind that to reach out to them, but that you've seen it slow down because anytime we see them, I, our code enforcement or our deputies will let them know. We cannot, I cannot issue them a business license. We don't, I mean, they could, we could do like a daily peddler's license, I think it's which, where you go door to door selling things. But I can't issue somebody a business license to be on a public sidewalk selling things. They could gift them away or they could, um, they could be collecting donations. Um, but as far as operating a business, they should be on private property where they can get the permission of the property owner, like to have a fruit stand or something. Then I could, you know, that could, they could go through the business license process. But when they're just on a street corner, um, I cannot issue them a business license to do that. Um, they did come in one time and ask for an application, but then never turned it, but I couldn't issue it anyway. So we just keep telling them, you know, you cannot sell on the street corner in the city. You need to go out into the county, um, because they're not concerned about it apparently, but.
Yeah, it's all over Clackamas County. I've seen them in Malala, Redland, um, Gladstone, Oregon City. Um, I've seen the, them everywhere.
They're everywhere. And I don't know what the source is.
Are they being fined?
I have.
For the violations?
No, I have not fined them.
Why?
For being in the city. I would not figure out what that fine looks like. That would be doing business without it.
Yeah. So they, they should be cited for conducting business without a license by our code enforcement.
Yep.
And I, you know, I, I assume it would just be her asking them for a copy of their business license. They don't have one. They get cited.
I'll find out how, how that would take place. I also will try to find out like where's the source of this. There's obviously somebody that is, that's the mastermind behind all, is orchestrating this. Um, so I don't know exactly how to find that out. I'll see what we can do.
They're in their pay. I'm sure they're paying all their taxes.
Oh, yes. Sure. They're paying their people. That's, that's my concern. They drop people off with kids, um, and leave them there all day.
Yeah. Where, where are they using the restroom? Um. Oh, that was my concern.
What did this lead to also? I mean.
I called the state and his exact words on the phone, well, did you buy some fruit? I said, well, are you hearing what I'm telling you here? He told me that they don't have any regulations. They are into farm to, to, to roadside, I guess, through the state of Oregon. They're trying to promote that. But if you don't know where it comes from and you have no safeguards, that's really dangerous place to be.
So the state of Oregon has actually a very elaborate statutory scheme around farm stands. And so what that person at the state told you is not correct.
Oh, good. No, because he's in charge of it.
It's not a pop-up. It's not a pop-up program. It's a, it's, I, as someone that had to permit one at one point, I can tell you, it's, it's, um, robust. And it's not, it, it not would, it would be a private property owner, um, would be renting their space to a licensed business. It was licensed in the city. Like Parsons Farms would be an example of a, of a, um, of, of a farm and located in the Cambiary where they do those farm stands in different cities. So they're like, all the, all the produce, I believe is from them. Um, and they have a fixed location on private property. They're licensed through the city. And again, you know, it's, it, that's the, that's the farm table. That it's not just somebody with the box on, on a city sidewalk. It's not what the statute's contemplated at all. So, yeah.
Yeah. Also with that, do we have any way to direct maybe where that could be? I mean, I feel like it's kind of inappropriate for it to be out front of a middle school or something like that where, where we have our children, this community and things like that. So.
Can't be out there. They shouldn't be out there at all. So when we do see them, we tell them they need to go.
Okay. Well.
Yeah. They would like farmer's market. The farmer's market's back up and running.
There you go.
Um, you know, that would be a place people sell their produce, um, if they become part of the farmer's market. Or if they had, um, like you said, a piece of, of private property to operate a farm stand. But they can't just be, so especially if they're in front of the schools, we would have them move along. But I'm slight, I'm slightly concerned for those folks that are, I mean, I don't know where they come from or, I don't know if there's anything I can do about it, but I, I will dig into it a little bit more for our community, but also for what, who, who are these people and are they okay?
All right. We appreciate that. Thank you very much for pursuing. All right. Um, that's all you have on yours?
Yes.
Okay. I'm probably going to need a public hearing script. I mean, I'm good, but I'm not that good. All right. All right. We will now close the city council and go into the public hearing for subdivision twenty twenty-three dash zero five dash S, Kellandon Acres. So. Let, who's speaking?
All right.
And let's, all right.
That's right. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to go ahead and present planning commission's recommendation for Kellandon Acres subdivision twenty twenty-three to zero five dash S. So the applicant is Alan Radamaker, who lives in town. Um, he's working with against consultant team at AKS Engineering and Forestry. Um, and just to give a little summary of the development proposal, it's a residential subdivision um, at three zero nine four one Southeast River Mill Road. It's a, just under a ten acre site, seventy-eight lots, seventy-six of those are two-unit common wall, um, lots, well, on the smaller side. And then there are two, um, two lots that are, um, set aside for single-family detached homes. And this site is triple zoned, which is kind of rare. So it's North City Residential, Highway Commercial and Central Mixed Use. And, um, yeah, this just gives you an idea where the site is. Um, there is a home on the site right now, but mostly it's an undeveloped greenfield. And here's our comp plan map, just to give you a zoomed out idea of where in the city it is and then zooming in. You can see this is the, the triple zone that I was talking about. So that's Highway Commercial on the left, on the west, and then North City Residential in the north side, and then Central Mixed Use on the bottom there. However, only the Central Mixed Use and the North City Residential are relevant for this application. Okay. Here's the preliminary plan. So it's a layout of seventy-eight lots and there are six tracts as well. Um, there's also four new internal rows proposed and those are designed to current local street standards. Okay. Here's a zoom in of the zones and the lot. Um, so there are forty residential lots in the Central Mixed Use Zone and all of those are for the two-unit common wall dwellings. And then the, um, there's thirty-eight residential lots in the North City Residential area. Thirty-six of those are for two-unit common wall dwellings. And two of them, the ones that are circled are for the single-family detached homes. And there are no homes, no residences or, or. Yeah. No, no real development in the, in the, um, Highway Commercial Zone. Um, so in the North City Residential and Central Mixed Use Zones, the minimum lot size for common wall dwellings is twenty-five hundred square feet. All of those common, uh, common wall lots are at least twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, and then North City Residential, the minimum lot size for single-family homes is five thousand square feet per dwelling unit. And those two lots meet that, um, meet that requirement. So both of those standards are met. And here's the open space plan. And this basically just calls out the locations and the functions of the, um, the open space tracts. Um, so right there I circled the stormwater facility. And then here is a large open space tract. We have three small open space tracks, so like kind of mini parks. And then there's one, the sixth tract is basically a, um, it's a private street, but we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit later. Okay. So here's the water plan. So it's a secure water service. The applicant proposes to connect to an existing twelve-inch low-pressure water main, which is a little over two thousand feet south on Eagle Creek Road, just north of Hillway, right by Campanella Estates. And this is the proposed plan, um, on site and adjacent to the site. And this is the recommended plan. Um, so Kurt McLeod, our city engineer, he recommends that the water line extend west to the property line along River Mill Road or be addressed by a fee in lieu. And here's the sewer system plan. Um, sewer system would connect to an existing manhole under River Mill Road, as shown in that little circle right there, about six hundred and thirty feet west of Eagle Creek Road. And so this, the city engineer previously recommended extending the sewer line north from road D along Eagle Creek Road. Just, you can see up here in this corner. Can you see my cursor? I don't know if you can see that. Yeah. So right over here. Um, however, talked to him today and he retracted that recommendation after he had some discussions with the applicant's engineering team. Um, I made the change in the report. The condition has been removed. Um, if you have any questions about that, um, I mentioned the applicant team could probably answer, answer those. All right. Here's the stormwater plan. Uh, onsite stormwater will be routed to a stormwater facility in tract A on the west. Um, and then redirected west to an off-site discharge point on tax lot twenty-one hundred, which is also owned by the applicant. Okay. And then moving on to the transportation system. This is the, yeah, in red, the interior streets. And so here is the local street design. So this is how, um, roads A through D are proposed to be built. We have a thirty-five foot paved surface, five-foot raised curb tight sidewalks within forty-eight feet, um, rights of way. Um, and so at the planning commission meeting, uh, the commission recommended requiring the applicant to widen streets by one foot. However, the applicant designed roads to our current TSP alternative minimum with design for local streets. They didn't actually need to do that since they submitted their application at the time that the previous TSP was in, in effect. So they worked with Kurt, our city engineer on that street design. And so since the applicant has already met or exceeded all this relevant street width and improvement criteria, the city can't legally require the applicant to redesign it, the internal streets. Um, and so staff recommends approval of the subdivision application with this proposed street design. And then as I was talking about before, the tract F, um, that is the private street. Um, that involves a twenty-three and a half foot paved section, five-foot curb tight sidewalk on the north side. Um, and no parking. Oh, actually it's on the south side. That's right. Wrong about that. So yeah, that's looking west. Sidewalk is on the south and no parking on the street. And then on to the adjacent streets. So first of all, look at Eagle Creek Road. Let's see. So this is from our TSP. Um, what do we have there? We have five-foot sidewalk, five-foot landscape strip, six-foot bike lanes, two-foot buffer, and then twelve-foot drivelines. And then here is their proposed plan. It's pretty much what the TSP is, um, is, is requiring. They did, in, um, they didn't include a wider bike lane and landscape script stripped, which the city is fine with. So they made that requirement. And on Eagle Creek Road, oh yeah, on Eagle Creek Road, there is an existing tramit bus stop. Um, so when the new bus stop is built, it will be built to tramit standards. Moving on to River Mill Road. So the applicants required to build half-street improvements along River Mill, just as they are along Eagle Creek. Um, when Eagle Creek Road was taken over by the city, a portion of River Mill also was granted to the city. And that's about what that looks like. Um, so development must meet city roadway standards in the city-owned portion and county standards in the county-owned portion. And so here's our TSP standard. It's really similar to the standard for Eagle Creek Road, but the bike lane and the buffer are slightly different widths. And here is the proposed plan. Um, it's also very similar to our TSP standard. They did include a wider bike lane and landscape strip and a narrow, narrower buffer strip. So the city is fine with the wider landscape strip, but we included a condition to, um, require bike lane and buffer be, um, be built to TSP standards. Um, oh, actually I wanted to mention this too. The county has signed off on this, on the design of the street improvements. So even though the city and the county are, um, both have jurisdiction on the street, um, it can be built consistently along the whole length of that site frontage with River Mill Road. Um, there are however, some unresolved issues involving Clackamas County. Um, they are requiring that improvements in the right of way be built to standards for a fifty-five miles per hour street. Um, that would require substantial grading and then pretty, pretty substantial restructuring of the street as well. Um, because of the topography of that area and existing sewer line inside River Mill Road, the applicant and the city agree that building to thirty miles per hour makes the most sense. Um, there's also a county site distance requirement that's in question, um, for the intersection of road A and River Mill Road. However, um, the city is able to process this application before these issues with the county are resolved. So council can approve this application without having specific county standards. Um, and the conditions of approval have been written so as to allow for city standards to be met while allowing for flexibility with the county while those issues are addressed. And so planning commission recommends approval of this application subject to conditions. And just a quick summary of those conditions. Um, public improvements will be required. Streets, sidewalks, bike lanes, et cetera, in the city right of way will be built to city TSP standards. Stormwater will be managed, sewer and water provided and extended north and west. Construction impacts are mitigated by the, um, requirement for an erosion control plan and geotech report. The fire code will be met and county conditions at this time are left unspecified. All right. And next step, here from the public and the applicants.
Let me read some of this down.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
Time to have the questions. Do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte contact at this time? Either the council now hear the staff report on the proposal. Staff, is there any correspondence regarding this application?
Um, there was one letter, but it's included in your packet.
Okay.
Nothing since then.
All right. Thank you. Uh, now I will read a statement about the evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record of the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter or a failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the party, parties an adequate. to afford Luba and the party, parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, would the applicant please come up?
We have to turn it back on.
Is it working now?
Yes.
Fantastic. My name is Jackie Herb and I'm with AKS Engineering and Forestry. Our address is one, two, nine, six, five, Southwest Herman Road, Suite one hundred in Toallerton, Oregon, nine, seven, zero, six, two. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Alan Radamaker. Um, I wanted to thank city council for your time this evening to hear about our project and thank Alan for his efforts on this project as well. Um, we prepared the land use application for Kelton Dock subdivision. And we have a short graphic presentation that we'd like to share. Um, Alan's giving you a pretty detailed report, so I'll try to keep it brief. You guys have quite a few things on your agenda, so. Um, with me, oh, sorry, next. Yeah, with me tonight is Alan Ra- Radamaker, the applicant. Todd Mobley is in Zoom land. He's our transportation engineer. And Steve Roper, um, is also with me. He's our engineer, um, a record for the project. Next slide. Um, I believe you all know where the site's located. This slide shows the location, which is northwest of the intersection of River Mill and Eagle Creek Road. And as Alan, um, said, the residential portion has both central mixed use and North City Residential zoning designations. Um, next slide. The project, uh, as you know, is a residential subdivision and it includes approximately one point one five acres of voluntary open space. That's all the green stuff. We don't count the private street in that. Um, tree preservation in that the majority of the sites' trees are located in that large tract. Uh, that will remain. Um, and has all the infrastructure improvements that are necessary to serve the, the, um, individual homes. It's got frontage improvements, right away dedication. And additionally, we are doing an offsite, uh, public water line to bring, uh, service up to the site. Next slide. Um, this is a little more detail about the subdivision. Um, as Alan said, it includes seventy eight lots for single family homes. Two are for detached and the remainder of those are for single family paired townhomes. And the single, both of those are listed as permitted uses in the site's, um, base zone. The, per the municipal code, um, the, the, uh, minimum lot size for the attached homes is two thousand five hundred square feet and the detached is five thousand square feet. And the preliminary plat includes lots that meet those requirements. And then finally, the project, um, density for the site, the minimum number of lots that are permitted is sixty five and the maximum would be ninety seven and we're kind of in the middle at seventy eight. So we meet the density requirements as well. Um, and that's all I have in terms of our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have for us.
Okay, Jerry, you had a question.
Um, so I have a, uh, first a statement and then a question. So my statement is, is by this design, there are no driveways exiting onto Eagle Creek Road or, or, uh, River Mill Road. So that's just a clarification statement because of what we just went through with the Lawrence Road, um, issue. There are no driveways, just two streets. One street on each exiting onto River Mill, one street exiting onto Eagle Creek from this development. And my question is, um, we just, uh, we're putting, there's going to be a roundabout put in on the corner of Eagle Creek and, and River Mill. And that's not reflected in this design. So is that, um, you know, that, that is something that's going to be, you know, engineered and, you know, and everything into, into your final, final design because it's not reflected here.
Correct. Yeah, we were told of the roundabout after we submitted the application. Um, we spoke with Kurt about it in detail and we have enough right of way, um, with what we have to accommodate that. So when we get our plans in, um, for the engineer to review, they'll make sure that they work with the planned roundabout.
Okay, that's all I have.
So in the, in your presentation, you mentioned that the committee asked for a foot wider on the roads and that was a no go, but then we're extending the landscape strip. Is there any reason that we couldn't shrink the landscape? The landscape strip, excuse me, a foot and give the planning commission what they asked for as far as the wider street?
Yeah, so as we understood from the planning commission's point of view, their main concern, um, had to do with parking. They wanted to make sure there was parking permitted on both sides. And with the design that we have, um, parking is permitted on both sides. So it has ten foot travel lanes and then seven foot, um, parking on each side. So it, it meets, um, I think the intent of what they were looking for.
Okay.
And to clarify that, the, uh, the curves were on the local streets within the subdivision, the extension of the strip, the landscape strip was, if I understand right, that's on Eagle Creek.
That's correct.
And we're.
They're different, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, when are, when are you guys planning on breaking ground and then maybe having like an initial occupancy?
Steve, would you like to address that? Get our engineer up here.
Really trying to boost up our infrastructure, so when I see developments come, come across, I want to make sure we can get ahead of the game, so.
Well, I guess with the plan is if there's somebody that were to develop this now, we would start this summer. Um, but that person is not in the driver's seat at the moment, so bending that. So.
And then how long before you usually get something like a year, nine months, once you start breaking ground and building new homes before you get occupants?
Well, in Estacada, if you don't get everything done, you know, by August, then it's gonna be springtime to finish it because of the soils. But, um, if this thing could start, what are we, are we May now? So if you could start next month, then it would have a chance of Decemberish getting done.
For the streets or?
Or the whole thing.
Or the.
For the infrastructure.
Not the homes.
Has this, uh, this been added into our sewer count? I mean, this came in after the fact. You said the developments were put in that we've already had in the books prior. Has this been added into that play?
That.
That would have happened.
I believe it has, because yeah, this, this, um, this lot has been within city limits, so it would have been counted as just part of being within the city and the allowed density that was allowed with that. Maybe Peter can speak.
Yeah, so it would have been, if, if ninety six is the, is the maximum number, then for our sewer planning purposes, this would have been counted as ninety six. And then it gets trued up when they actually, it gets platted. So that until it's, until they've recorded the plat, we would count this, um, for all of our infrastructure as ninety six units. And then we downward adjust if, if it comes in at less than that, which is the case here. So we would then reduce it by eighteen once it gets built.
Can you talk about the outstanding issue with Clackamas County over River Mill Road? I understand they want it to be cited for fifty five mile an hour and the city, uh, says thirty five. Um, what, what, what's driving that? And if I'm understanding that right, and then what happens if that's not resolved?
So it becomes state standard, right? If you've got an unposted county road to put the speed on it is fifty five miles an hour. So since it's not posted, then you just go to the state rule of fifty five. So they've conditioned this to have site distance for a fifty five mile an hour for Road A coming out onto River Mill. So we've got site distance to where we can see out to the highway. Um, our traffic engineer looked at it and we've got eight hundred feet, which is in their report. Um, so now it comes down to the vertical is what we've got to work out. And, um, hopefully, and I don't know, I've had talks with your city engineer and he's been talking to Melanie. The hope would be from our standpoint is if this road be annexed to the city out to Highway two twenty four. But that would solve our speed issue because his point is, is we don't want a fifty five mile an hour road next to a residential development, which the other side's owned for that as well. So when the roads coming into it are twenty five, thirty miles an hour on the other side of Eagle Creek and then you just gas it to go to two twenty four. So, but I think that's why they only conditioned us for fifty five mile an hour site distance versus the design of the road.
And we're having conversations with the county, trying to work through this, am I right?
Yes, yes. I would let them know that the city is willing to take on that road. It just, and they've put us in the queue for their process. Um, so I don't know how long that will take, but I have, we have notified them though.
Once you get that number of houses, once the neighborhood's established, doesn't it change the speed limit? I, we, I thought we ran into a similar situation on Lawrence Road with it being unposted, but then it becomes a neighborhood once you get that number. Is it because there's no driveways?
Yeah.
Onto that.
Yeah, because on that, on the current Creek Three, there were driveways that were exiting, entering and exiting onto Lawrence Road directly. So yeah, I don't think that that would apply here.
Do we have the ability to change the speed limit for the section of road that is in city jurisdiction?
It's only like two hundred and sixty feet. So I suppose we could, but then it would go from thirty to fifty five, like, like about a third of the way through the development, but yeah.
It might be more than we've got between the forty five, twenty five speed limits on the old highway.
Yes.
Yeah, what, we recently just received a road, that portion of the road right in front of Wade Creek, those, those new apartments right there, right? What was the time process on that for us to get that for?
Was it about a year?
It seems like it was about a year, but, um, I don't know if that will, I don't know if it will take that long. We were approaching the, like, the new budget year. The county has to pay the city, um, a certain amount for the city taking over responsibility of that road. And we want to make sure that we receive that funding. And I don't know if they can do it this fiscal year or if it has to be in the next budget. But we are, either way, we're approaching that, um, budget year line. And so, well, I'll just have to follow up with them again. But I think, um, and then figure out how we, how we do set that. Because I think if you did a study of the speed on that road and the eighty, it's eighty percent of uh, what, what eighty percent of the cars do, I mean, there's, I would say there's not a lot of cars that actually hit fifty five on that road. Um, but I could be wrong.
Well, I think we have a lot more in the game as development starts and you start immediately doing that with the county arguing that point. Um, so if you're starting on, on time, like you say, I don't think this is really going to be an argument at all. So they're gonna see the development as in play.
It's gonna start out as posted and stopped.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's, it's my understanding talking to Kurt. And I asked him this morning if we could get together and talk about the roundabout because I don't want to build something that you turn right around next year and tear back out when you do your roundabout. So let's figure it out and get it worked into the design. And he's saying, well, we're gonna start, stop, you know, stop, signed. And then I'm just gonna make sure we can accommodate whatever happens there with the roundabout to where we don't tear out something brand new, so.
Makes sense.
And then I'm looking at your designated green space with the trees and stuff. And if I'm familiar with that area, there's, that's right there on the edge of that hill or that slope. Is that gonna be, one of the concerns is park space already, right? With especially with what our needs are, where we're already behind. Is that usable for dog parks or hiking trails? Is there some kind of use there for that? Like, or is it just a hill with trees on it?
Yeah, we're, we're contemplating a trail of some sort. That slope's like twenty, twenty five percent on the side of that hill, obviously. And the main thing is a scenic area. We contemplated, you know, bringing something out at the end of the sidewalk, a place that you could go, maybe put a, a bench in or something that where you could go out there and do whatever. And it's, you know, right now it's our understanding that it's gonna be owned by the HOA. So it's not gonna be, uh, you know, a, a city park facilities per se. So it'd be something amenities that we could do for the residents here.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any more questions? All right, thank you very much for that. Uh, before you leave, um, are there any additional questions from staff?
From staff, no?
No. Okay, and do we have any request forms speak on this project at all? Okay, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the city council. And if you want to put a motion up, Alan, do you have one? Something that I can read from?
Yes, let me get that back on. My glasses on so I can see.
Can I just make the motion?
Well, I want to make sure we get it right, so, because there's a couple additions of planning. And.
All right. Last page.
There we go. Okay, there you go.
I move to approve subdivision twenty twenty three dash zero five dash S, Kellon Donk Acres. Um, with conditions as presented by staff.
Okay, do I have a second?
My second.
Hey, can I have a roll call, please, city?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you for that. I will go out of the city council and back into the public hearing. Okay, we have, uh, a zone change, uh, twenty twenty four dash zero one dash Z C Reagan Hill Development. So I will let you speak on that, Alan.
All right, let me get that up on the screen. All right. There's a lot of stuff on.
There we go.
Okay, thanks for your patience. I will present planning commission's recommendation on twenty twenty four dash zero one dash Z C, the Reagan Hill Zone Change. Okay, the applicant is Steven, Steven Mueller. Is it Mueller or Mueller? Mueller, thank you. Okay, who's obviously in the audience for this. Um, the consultant is all county surveyors and planners, Adam Sandy. And the proposal is a comp plan map and zoning map amendment to change the zoning from R one, our low density residential to R two, our medium density residential. Um, it involves two properties, just over two acres. The top, um, the top lot is slotted for a mobile home park expansion. And the lower lot is, um, according to the, um, according to the applicant, um, the intention is to redevelop that tax lot with uses permitted in the R two zone. Okay, just a little map here. Um, so it's north of Sixth Avenue, uh, east of Wade. It's near the high school, River Mill Elementary, the library, Wade Creek Park, Transit Lines and downtown. And just here's zoomed out in the comp plan map to give a, give an idea where it sits in the city. Okay, and then zooming in, so. Okay, and then zooming in, so we see a lot of R one around there, the lots or the subject site is currently zoned R one. Um, surrounded by a mix of other higher density zones. So we have the general commercial and the residential commercial and the pink, the two pink shades there. And there's some R three multifamily nearby as well. And this is how the compliment map would look if the zone change were approved. Were approved, um, the change would provide a transition between general commercial properties to the west and the R one properties to the east. Okay, and here's the available water. Um, so the EMC chapter pertaining to zone change, zone, zone changes requires the site. Be presently provided with adequate public sanitary sewer, surface water management. And water facilities and services to support the use or will be in the near future. So as you can see from this map, this is from Public Works. Um, water service is rarely available from, from Sixth Avenue and possibly even from an existing line in the northeast up there. And similarly with sewer, um, there's city sewer available from a line to the east of the site and possibly also from the south. Okay, now talking a little bit about the zone change criteria specifically. It meets applicable statewide planning goals, um, specifically goal ten goals. So, um, goal ten requires. Local jurisdictions to allocate a sufficient amount of buildable land to satisfy their housing needs. So this proposed zone change would allow for the expansion of existing manufactured home park onto one lot. Um, it also would allow for a slight increase in density of tax lot thirteen hundred to the south. Which supports the aims of statewide planning goal ten. It also meets transportation related criteria in our development code chapter on zone changes. So the applicant submitted a trip generation letter and that letter finds that the proposed zone change from R one to R two zoning. Will not result in significant impacts to the surrounding transportation system. And the findings of that trip generation letter were verified by our transportation consultants at DKS. Um, and so it meets the criteria in the city code related to the trip planning or trans, sorry, transportation planning rule. Oregon Highway Plan and, um, our own code. Also, it meets complang goals, specifically supports chapter eight housing. And the policies, there's four policies in particular that support this zone change and the complan. And so there's policy one to encourage a variety of housing types at various prices. Policy two, provide wider range of housing choices. Policy seven to encourage development of manufactured dwellings. And policy thirteen to encourage voluntary upzoning of low density zone properties. When they're near services like transit lines, schools, libraries and such in downtown. All right, and planning commission recommends approval, um, without conditions. And that's all I have. Any questions?
The members of the house, council have any questions, Chair?
Um, were the residents in all the single family homes surrounding these two properties, were they contacted? Were there, were there any? Comments from those residents?
Don't believe there were any comments, but yeah, so for zone changes, we actually, usually we need to notify houses within one hundred feet or properties. Owners of properties within a hundred feet. For zone changes, it's either two or three hundred, it might be three hundred. And we, we, um, notified the owners of all properties and I do not believe that we. Got any, it's, yeah, if they're, if there are no letters in your packet that we didn't receive.
Just to be clear, at this point, we're looking at a zone change, this, there's nothing about, uh, any planned building or anything like that, that's down the line or?
Um, so, yeah, the plan is to expand the mobile home park. To the south on the top lot. I don't know if the, I don't know if there are specific plans for the southern lot. Perhaps the applicant could speak to that. But yeah, the mobile home park expansion is, I think that was the impetus for doing this zone change, yeah.
Do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare expert take contact? Staff, is there any correspondence regarding this application? I will now read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing, an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba. Must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issue shall be raised. With sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. A failure of an issue to ra, be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter, a failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba. And the party's an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, with the applicant piece, come up to the podium.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Brown, um, Tracy Brown, planning consultants out of Sandy, Oregon. And, um, as Alan mentioned, um, the plan commission recommended approval of this. I, I wrote the, um. Applicants, um, findings, supporting approval of the application. It, uh, basically as, uh, Steve Mueller is here and he, he'll probably want to talk a little bit after I finish. So there's two properties involved, as Alan mentioned, there's the property that's adjacent to the manufactured home park. And Steve would like to, uh, expand that park onto that property. And at this point, as far as I know, he doesn't have any plans to develop the property with frontage on Northwest Six. But it would be a, a use that would be permitted under the zoning. Um, Alan didn't mention, but I'd like to just mention that, you know, when we submitted the application, we were under the impression that. Based on the city code, that manufactured home parks in this zone would be a conditional use. And you may see in your packet, exhibit five, we received a letter from the, uh, Department of Land Conservation Development Representative. Basically stating that an ORS one ninety-seven point four eight zero. Requires cities to allow manufactured home parks as a permitted use in this R two zone. So. That's good news to us. I've, I'm not sure I've ever seen a, uh, I've been a planner about thirty years and I'm not sure I've ever seen a GLC rep. Um, helping a developer in that regard. Um, from a city perspective, it probably doesn't make that much difference. Um, you know, it's a pretty straightforward. Extension of the road into this property. Um, and there are other regulations, state regulations. That control the development of manufactured home parks. I just wanted to make note of that. I don't think it needs to be part of a condition since there's the letter and we assume that. You know, Steve could just bring in his plans to, um, expand the manufactured home park. Since he wouldn't have to go through that conditional use permit process. So it's a, it's a, kind of reduces a step for him a little bit. So I guess with that, maybe I'll just, uh, we have Ray Moore, who's the engineer. Uh, worked on the project and Mike Art, who did the traffic analysis here, as well as Steve Mueller. Um, I guess with that, maybe I'll just ask Steve to come up and say a few words about his plans for the property.
Good evening, I'm Steve Mueller. Uh, we are the owner of the Altamore Park and the Westland Townhomes and Western Realty. And the plan is to. Enlarge the park by nine spaces in the, that northerly tax lot that. Our park adjoins and then additionally. Terminates that, uh, on Carlton Street. A couple of neighbors have came forward to me are concerned about traffic on Carlton Street and we discussed that at the, uh. Planning Commission, our intention is to request the fire department for a fire gate. To delineate between the public street and our private roads. The mobile home parks are private roads, so we wouldn't want the traffic circulation coming down Carlton through the park. Back out to Eagle Creek Road, and I think the neighbors on Carlton are, are, uh, in agreement with that. Any other questions I could?
Any other questions for Steve?
Just, just for clarification, Carlton is the short road, um, off of Eighth Avenue.
That's correct.
That's the short. Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a half street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems pretty self-explanatory. I think you did a good job putting this forward.
So, so, so as far as the design, we didn't submit a design. It's a couple of big, we wanted to get the zone changed, then, then we'll, we'll come back and submit a design, I guess, just to the billing department.
I guess, but since we probably won't see this, um. You know, being what we just went through a couple of years ago with the fires, you know, there's always a concern for, um, being able to evacuate, being able to get out. And at this point, it looks like there's, I know you're only adding nine spaces at this point, but, um, there's only just the two. The two roads, there are the two private roads going out onto, uh, Eagle Creek Road, um, or Wade Street. Is, i- is there a plan in the future to punch out through that other property and connect with Sixth or?
No, well, well. I thought maybe the Sixth Street piece might have a higher and better use as. You know, a medium densi, density multiple or cottage cluster or, and, and then, then you get back to the problem that. Mobile home park streets are private streets.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, we, I guess that's the long answer, the short answer is no, we're gonna try and work with the accesses we have.
Yeah, just, like I said, living on, living on cemetery road, seeing the issue with getting, you know, with that being the only road going out, you know. Going out for all those houses at that point. Um, I just don't want to see this being an issue in the future, um, with only having that, the. Those two.
I, I understand, Jerry, and I think that there would be a gate on Carlton, not only for fire departments. Use maybe for emergency use of the tenants in the park, something like that.
Okay. I think it's still pretty self-explanatory. We appreciate you coming up there. Thank you. Hey, does staff have any ads here?
No, we do not.
Hey, do I have any speaker request forms at all? All right, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the city council. And how would you like the motion to read? Right, pulling it up. All right. There's your motion and City, I'll do a roll call vote on this one.
I move to approve the rezoning from R one to R two as approved and presented by staff.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a first and a second?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Now I will close the city council, reopen the public hearing. Uh, we have subdivision twenty twenty-four dash zero one dash S, Current Creek Estates four.
Great. This is the last land use application, night, by the way. All right. Okay, I will now present planning commission's recommendation for twenty four, twenty twenty-four dash zero one dash S. Current Creek Estates, number four. Okay, the applicant is Scott Clayton out of Gresham and the consultant again is all county surveyors and planners in Sandy. And the proposal is a residential subdivision, twenty-five single family detached lots. Um, six point two four acre site that is zoned R one. And just to give you a look at whereabouts that is. So, it's the aerial view, you can see Valley View Airport off to the west, right there. Yeah, let me see. You have Current Creek two to the south, um, and then you have Southeast Lawrence Road to the north right there. And so as you can see, this area is predominantly R one, R one, low density residential, it's very near the eastern edge of the urban growth boundary. Um, that purple right there, that's the, the new airport zone. Yep, as of the current city limits and it's surrounded mostly by county properties. So here's a preliminary plan. Got the twenty-five lots, they are all at least seventy-five hundred square feet as required in the R one zone. Uh, we have three new internal streets proposed, plus a continuation of Northeast Mary Terrace coming up from the south. Um, and then we got a stormwater tract A at the northwest corner. And here's the proposed water system, city water service would be provided to all lots, um, and then extended to the egg, the edges of the subject site. Um, the applicant provo, proposed an eight inch water line in Lawrence Road, but the county engineer Kurt recommends installation of a twelve inch water line. To provide for future continuation of the high service system. Here's the proposed sewer plan. Um, because of the site topography, the applicant proposed to terminate sewer lines at north as shown. Those two, the two northern streets. Um, and this is the recommended plan. Um, city engineer recommends that lines can and should. Be extended to, to Lawrence Road at minimum slopes in order to achieve sufficient depth. Here is the stormwater plan. Um, so the onsite stormwater would be routed to the stormwater facility there in tract A on the northwest corner of the subject site. And here is the proposed cross section for the new internal streets. As shown in the preliminary plans, so thirty-two foot paved section. Five foot raised curb tight sidewalks within forty-five foot rights of way. And on-street parking shall be allowed on all, allowed on only one side of these local streets. And here's the design for Southeast Lawrence Road. Um, the segment of Lawrence Road fronting the site, um, will be constructed to these. Half-street improvement standards. So here we have a fif, sixteen foot paved section, five foot sidewalks and a five foot minor strip. And the planning commission recommends approval subject to conditions and I will just go quickly over a summary of those. Um, so the majority are taken from council's original, oh wait, no, that is not right. Strike that. Public improvements are provided. Streets and sidewalks are built to city standards. Um, stormwater managed, water and sewer provided, extended north and east and construction impacts mitigated and the fire code will be met. And again, that's all I have. Next steps are public comment, questions?
I'll read this, this first and we'll get down there to, to the applicant. Do any members of the council wish to abstain and declare expert take contact? Okay, uh, staff, is there any correspondence regarding the application?
No, there is not.
Okay, I will now read a statement about the evidence presented at the hearing and an issue which. May be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing. Any specific applications, such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford. Luben, the party's an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter, a failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba. And the party's an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba at the, uh, or on the issue. Okay, with the applicant, please come up to the podium, please.
Evening, I'm Tracy Brown, a planning consultant. This is Ray Moore with all county engineers and surveyors and he'll. Uh, talk. We also have Mike Art, who did the traffic analysis and the applicant Scott Clayton is here. So as Alan mentioned, um, we're proposing a twenty-five lot subdivision on a little over six acres. And it's in, uh, the R one zoning district. The primary access to the site will be from the existing street in phase two of Current Creek Estates. Although it does have, uh, frontage on Lawrence Road. We didn't, you know, pay particular attention to the comments received at the last hearing on phase, uh, three. And so we assured that there's no, uh, direct access of lots onto Lawrence Road. As was kind of necessary with that other application. Um, all the lots meet the minimum lot size. I think it, it feels like a pretty straightforward one. There's no environmental overlays on the site or anything like that. So with that. Um, we're requesting, uh, city council approve it and I'll turn it over to Ray.
Uh, for the record, Ray Moore, uh, all county surveyors and planners, P O Box nine five five Sandy. Um, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Appreciate you, uh, being here on a, such a beautiful day. That's, uh, a tough job you got when the weather's so nice out, but, so I'll be brief. Um, went through all the conditions of approval, everything looks fine with the exception of one. Um, went through all the conditions of approval, everything looks fine with the exception of one, uh, condition approval thirty three is kind of a blanket statement requesting that all of the sewer lines be extended north to Lawrence Road. So, um, Cedar Avenue, that's the most westerly street. The sanitary sewer will come out of the ground if I extend it all the way to Lawrence Road. We're sort of at the limits of the sanitary sewer drainage basin at this point. And so by, you know, leaving the condition as is, I can't really meet it. So all that I ask is that, uh, if you could add the words, if possible, maybe at the, the end of that paragraph. Um, because we might be able to extend the other sewer all the way up to Lawrence. Um, I think the grades will allow.
Ray, you emailed me about this, right?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about the planning commission.
That wasn't added. The language was not added that you. Oh. I'm sorry, what's that?
Did you have something in our packet or email us on that?
Um, I just remembered, do you know, um, I thought that I had incorporated that a sewer line should be extended north to southeast Lawrence Road at minimum slopes unless deemed unfeasible by the city.
Okay, so that did get added? Okay, yeah, thank you, I wasn't sure.
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, with that said, I think good, based on the conditions that has written. So, any questions? Are you happy to answer?
Just a statement.
Okay.
I appreciate you guys, um, taking to heart our concerns with the driveways going on to Lawrence Road. I really do appreciate that, that means a lot, so thank you guys.
Yeah, you bet.
I'd also like to add that I was told, I was informed that you guys were pretty quick to get that stop sign that you agreed to do on your behalf on regarding the, the prior phase and that that was installed. I'd like to say thank you for taking that seriously, getting into that, getting that involved.
Perfect, yeah, Scott's back here, he's the man that took care of that, I'm sure, so.
Okay, I think you, you got her.
All right, thank you, thanks.
All right. Any speaker request forms or anything, anybody speaking on this? Okay, the staff wish to add anything else before we close?
No, we're all good.
All right, I will now close the public hearing and reopen the city council. And let's put a motion up.
One quick question, Alan, did the issue of the pipe size get addressed in the staff recommendation? So that if we go with option one, it'll be covered going from eight to twelve?
Yes. There we go. All right. Finish your motion.
I move to approve, uh, as presented by staff.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let's give it a roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. All right, I think that's all the public hearings tonight, I'm about worn out with that one.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for your.
All right. We have, uh, next a guest presentation to the council from Portland General Electric. I prefer.
Okay. I guess I could do a little, a quick introduction here. I'll let you introduce yourself, is Julie, Julie not coming up? Just stay back there, okay? Yes, we have Julie Hernandez here, she's our government liaison person, I'm probably saying that title wrong. Um, and then we also have senior vice president Larry Beckdahl. Is that who is here, and I'll let you elaborate on that, but thank you for joining us this evening.
There we go. Um, so good evening, mayor, council members. And a big thank you to the city manager for invitation, I think, following on, maybe a request uh, to have, uh, P G come and present, and so thank you for taking time. I almost felt like I want to bring a building development or something, you guys are great. Click right through them, and also what I was really impressed was the county, um, and, and the work together, so, uh, pleasant to see that, so congratulations to you all for, on that behalf. Um, so yes, Larry Beckdahl, uh, senior vice president for our advanced energy delivery and strategy. Um, that's just a big title for the guy that's been around a long time, doesn't have a lot of hair. Um, I, prior to joining Portland General Electric, I was with Bonneville Power, ran their transmission. Prior to that, I was with Clark Public Utilities, and prior to that, it was with Pacific Core. So I've seen all shapes of utilities across the northwest here. And, uh, we'll just say the electrons are the same. Um, the color of money might be different at times, but our, our dedication, I would say, to service and reliability is utmost for, for any utility, uh, much like yourselves, uh, and the infrastructure that you serve, uh, to the community here. Uh, we look at it the same way, uh, we want to make sure that it's done, done well, reliable, affordable. And now even as we talk safe, um, you know, as we consider things such as wildfire, it's even more important. So, so thank you for having us, uh, here this evening, and, and for Julie, I know, uh, she's around, she's kind of been the main contact. Uh, but we do have, uh, seventy employees that live here in the Estacada area. And I know even with my experience with Bonneville Power, um, there are a number of employees that lived here, people love to live in Estacada. And, uh, and I have to say, I'm jealous at times, uh, to see, uh, the area, uh, came up and worked in the Faraday project quite a bit. And, um, I would just say, this is such a beautiful area. And, and I know it's untamed, but maybe that's not all bad at times. Um, I, I think you have to appreciate the beauty here. So if we can, I think, uh, we can flip through a few, and, and I know it's been a long day. So please, by all means, if you've got questions that would go along, jump in. I want to get to the things that maybe matter to you the most and answer questions, um, here is throughout the discussion. But, uh, we'll be open to any, any and all questions on that behalf. So I think everybody recognizes it's been here a hundred and thirty years, um, and yes, it started at the Willamette Falls, but Faraday and, and the other facilities here came right after that. Um, trying to bring energy from the hydro facilities right into downtown Portland. And, and it's interesting to note that, uh, the first DC long transmission line from Willamette Falls to downtown Portland in the United States was done there at that location, fourteen miles, it was turned to AC, a single phase, and then it went to AC three phase. And, uh, this is right at the time of the, the World's Fair in Chicago and the big fight between AC and DC and Westinghouse and, 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 uh, GE, you know, fighting it out, and, uh, AC won out at the time, but as we're seeing our world change, DC is coming back and, uh, changing a lot of what we do every day. Um, so we, we talk about investments and how our facilities, we talk about reliability and how important it is. But I, we'll just say that, you know, investments, as you all know, in infrastructure, take something. You see buildings, you see the developments that are going on. And you understand when it's, you're extending water lines, well, electric's the same way. And sewer line is the same way, so how do we maintain those? How do we keep that in good condition? And if it's been a hundred and thirty years, we've got assets that are fairly old across the system, as well as those that are brand new that, uh, you know, we want to keep enhancing and make sure that, uh, you know, we meet what customers are requesting of us. So if you flip to the next slide, um, a big, big question has come up on what we call our, our rate review process. And, um, uh, last January, if you recall, um, we had an eighteen percent increase. And that was hard, that was really hard, um, I know for, for all of us, and, and continues to be. And we kept it flat, as you can see from this chart, we kept things flat for a long time, and even going through COVID. And inflation hit hard, and it hit all of us. And, um, and on top of that, our power supply costs have gone up significantly. And so those two combined were about seventy some percent of the total as we looked at that eighteen percent increase, uh, to our customers. Um, and now, and we'll talk here in a moment about, um, you know, rate review, that started in the January, or let's see, the February before, so that would have been February of twenty three to become effective, January of twenty twenty four. We learned some lessons also, one, January is always the highest bill, um, of the year because of the cold weather. And so those with electric heat, um, you know, it impacts them the most in that particular month. Also, we had a storm, the ice storm, as you can recall, um, and keeping up with that, so people were out of power on top of that. The bill was confusing because you had half of December and half of January in your bill, two different rates, multiple line items on everything. And so not only were our customer reps getting all the calls, so were the calls going to the commission, so were the calls going to all the advocates, uh, on behalf of customers. And so you, you think about headache, why did, why did you create that kind of a headache for yourself? We've got to simplify that, make it a lot easier. And then finally, in February, we announced that we're starting a rate review again this year. It will go on until possibly January of twenty twenty five, and that's a seven percent increase on top of that eighteen percent. And I'll talk about that here in a moment. Um, but we don't take that lightly. Um, you know, again, we really prided ourselves in keeping it flat for a long time. But I will say the, the cost in terms of both power, the inflation, but now, uh, even our investments. So having to upgrade the system, whether it's for wildfire, uh, whether it's for, you know, reliability in general, uh, and replacing a lot of the old assets has taken its toll on us, and so that's what we're feeling right now. So we'll go to the next slide. Um, I, I mentioned the regulatory process, and, and much like, I'm sure you go through, uh, open public forums. Uh, ours is a ten month process, and so we open it up. And then, uh, you know, those that want to intervene, we have public hearings that go on all through that process over the ten months. And then finally, the Oregon Public Utility Commission will make a decision based upon all of they, that they've heard. What we try to do is encourage everybody to participate, and you know how hard it is to get people to, to come and participate at times, so, um, you know, we're always seeking for better ways how to get, uh, public customers involved with us and, uh, to help us make the right decisions. Where should we be putting investments? Where should we not be putting investments? How should we be moving the, the system forward if we're going to cleaner energy? What does that look like? And, and how do, do we do that with making it affordable? So like I mentioned, it's a ten month process that we go through, if we go to the next slide. Um, I mentioned the twenty twenty four, so in February, we filed. Again, uh, we go from a rate increase to a storm to another filing. It creates a, what I would say, a storm in and of itself, and it takes a life of itself. And so a lot, a lot of lessons learned for us to say, how should we approach this differently? You know, as we go into the future. Needless to say, um, those changes are still impacting us. I, I mentioned the capital investments, so seventy five percent of our rate increases, we talked about the seven percent that we proposed, is associated with new capital investments. That is, uh, we're putting in some large batteries, um, that are going to impact the system, trying to take advantage of renewables that we bring in. Uh, last year, we started, uh, production out of eastern Montana, a project called Clearwater, that we're actually bringing energy into the Portland area. And those types of projects, when you don't have the need for it at, at peaks of the system, you end up putting it in to storage, and that's what we really want to use those batteries for. And then during the day when you hit the peak, you're using that. So we want to be able to recover that energy source in a better way. Yeah, Jerry.
Um, is P G getting involved with the state as far as like the, uh, so their, their program with solar panels? Because that's a, I mean, you, you don't need to buy property, you don't need to, you know, you don't need to put, you know, you don't need to put up anything. You, you know, solar panels are a, I know that ball of fire in the sky, the sky, we only get to see it a few months out of the year, but, um, it does, it is a renewable resource, we do, it does produce energy, and, um, it would feed those batteries. So is P G actually getting involved with the state on their, in their program for trying to put solar panels on people's houses?
No, absolutely, um, there's a couple of different programs, not only a state program, there's a federal program. And so, uh, tax credits, you can get about thirty percent tax credit, uh, currently, if you put solar on your rooftop. What I would say, it's even better if you do match it up with batteries. So whether that's in the home, and I'll speak to that as, then it becomes your own generation within a home. And so if there's loss on our side, the home can continue to operate. And, uh, we're looking at some, some techniques, they'll say with a meter, et cetera, to help that separation at times. Um, because what, from a safety perspective, you want to make sure it's not back feeding into a fault and, and people that are working on the line. Uh, so they have an automatic transfer switch, but meter can do that. It'd save customers a lot of money if we go that route. But, um, to your point, yes, we're, right now, we're in the three hundred to three hundred and fifty, uh, uh, new requests every week for solar on rooftops. Um, and like I say, it's been very popular, we'll, we'll, we'll see more of that. Our system, uh, forty five hundred megawatts, we currently have five hundred megawatts of solar in our system, uh, from rooftops. Can't, can't control it in a way, meaning that when the sun's shining, they're operating. When sun's not shining, you're not operating, that, that's the only control you have right now. But there are times when it would be nice to feed it into a battery, then take it out of the system, say, um, I'll use the example of, uh, with the heat dome of twenty twenty one. Um, up here at, uh, Mount Hood by Sandy, there was a couple of feeders that with solar. And, uh, when the sun went down, it was still a hundred and fifteen degrees out. The homes are still calling for air conditioning as much as possible. Now we're starting to overload the substation transformer, so the thermal capabilities are being exceeded. What we're able to do is actually turn on generators that we had, um, through some customers, their backup generators. And we kept the system operating and not overloading the transformer. So if you have the batteries and you hold that energy until late evening, now when the sun's going down, you can start to use it when that's still hot and, and are cold. It's perfect, it's, it helps to balance the energy across the system. And that's why I mentioned a large scale, we're doing that with wind from Montana to do that. But could we do it in a home? Absolutely, we want to encourage that. So we're going to be pushing a lot of new products out with association with solar, love to see it. The other thing that we are learning is that, um, of our generation mix, um, we have about thirty six, thirty seven hundred megawatts of the forty five hundred megawatts that I mentioned. Uh, in terms of our own generation, we end up buying about twenty percent all the time. So what does that mean? Um, we'd like to put more solar alongside the wind projects that we have out there. So that hot summer days, typically the wind's not blowing, but the solar would be there, and you can use the transmission that we have. So I just share those thoughts to say, we've got to get better at using those resources and balancing the system all the time. Great question. Yes.
Two quick questions, one clarifying, you said rates have remained flat, is it flat relative to inflation and that you haven't raised them much beyond inflation, or are you saying that you haven't had a increase in rates for those years that you were noting?
It was fairly flat, and, and like you say, to your point, um, we try to keep it always underneath of inflation, what's just, you know, we owe that to our customers, so it was staying really close to the one percent in that area.
How far back would we have to go for, for rates to have doubled?
Ooh. It was before me, um, so that was ten years ago.
Okay.
I, I want to say.
I just heard those large number like eighteen percent.
Yeah, yeah.
So that compounds, I would just think that, I mean, seven percent over seven years and you double.
Yeah.
So those large of increases.
I, I, I would say it's been probably maybe close to fifteen, something back to that timeframe.
Thank you.
All right, let's jump to the next slide. So one of the things that we learned obviously through this, and we, it was because of various, uh, coalitions in communities, talking about seniors, talking about low income, uh, what can we do different? And something that came out was the income qualified bill discount program. So we now have a discount program for those that are seniors and low income. And I think if we go to the next, uh, you know, there's the typical energy efficiency and other programs that, that have been out there. Um, but this bill discount program, um, you know, we anticipate, and we're seeing, you know, customers now signing up um, and trying to take advantage of that. So it really does make a difference for our seniors and our low income. And, uh, we think it's, again, came out of, it wasn't an idea that we put together, it was those that came to our rate reviews and said, hey, here's something that would make a difference for customers. So just, just an example to say, we want to listen. Yes.
Um, how does that program work?
So based on your eligibility, um, in terms of your household income, I can't give you the details, I don't know it that well. Happy to do so if you want, um, but if you're, you meet that criteria, then there's a certain ramp up, how much of a discount you get. And, uh, um, we try to encourage it now. You can imagine our call centers, you get a lot of customers that are inquiring, having difficulty paying bills, et cetera. Um, we make sure we walk them through that and then see who is eligible.
So then who pays for kind of like the back half if, you know, you have, yeah?
So you're right, it's a chair that then gets reallocated to all customers based on that.
Is there a work requirement?
You know, you, you, there is a review. I can't say there's a work requirement, but if your income is X, whatever make up of that income is. But there's a verification the following year, are you still at the same income? And so there are, there are.
Customers are paying for people that are able bodied to work, that choose not to work, that have a low household income. Are we paying those bills? Are are the other customers paying those people's power bill, the offset on their power bill?
I I can't give you a direct answer because I can't, other than your income base, that's all I can go off of.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. All right, if we go to the next slide, want to touch on wildfire and go back to Labor Day of twenty twenty. That was our eye opener, I guess I would say for wildfire. And certainly it started with Mount Hood and and us turning off power on Mount Hood because of the conditions, the high winds, the heat, having it down on the mountain. But I know we worked with fire departments all through Clackamas County here and on through the valley and shutting off power in in locations. And it was hard for me, growing up in the Northwest and thinking about Douglas Firs and how much water and moisture they have. And how could this be, you know, in terms of the threat of wildfire? And we've watched it move, migrate from California right on up in in onto the Northwest. It is a real threat. And so we continue to refine. We're looking for ways to harden the system. I see as I drive up, you know, and I'm seeing a lot of the tree, the the vegetations, the cutbacks, et cetera, that now we're doing tree or a lot more tree removal where mortalities have gone up on trees. So we're seeing mortality rates of something on the order of three to eight percent annually. And and, you know, is that heat, you call what it is? We we know that older trees don't adapt as well, newer trees will adapt. But we're seeing that mortality rate. And so what that means for us, wind blows, trees, power lines don't do well together. So we've got to try and remove those that are going to fall into the the lines or we're going to have blowout where the branches are coming into the trees. But we also have to think about how we harden. Do we put covered wire up? Do we do underground? You know, what what are the best solutions? And, you know, we're trying to figure out what is the best overall. But neither one is is cheap, but at the same time, what's public safety worth and and saving, you know, homes during those periods of time? So the cheapest thing is to shut the power off. But it's the hardest thing in terms of managing a system, you know, customers and and their expectations and also restoring power. Because you've got to go out and patrol every one of those lines to make sure that there's not a tree hung up in the line before you re-energize. So it's been a real learning experience for us, but I would say we've got still a lot more science. We've put a lot of great cameras up that have really helped out even in this area with A I, et cetera. We will keep advancing this. Yes, sure.
Are you running into any issues with this as as far as like forest management? Do you think that could be part of the problem?
Oh, absolutely. We see, we saw it on our property. So even our property up here along the river, we had to remove a lot of timber that if you leave it there or if you allow it to fall, you know, now you've got fuel on the floor.
Is there something on the state level as P G brought this to the, you know, any state representatives or whatnot? Since they cut back so much on forests, you know?
Yes, and I know even the county commissioners have been talking about that heavily here at Clackamas, is that how important that is? And our cooperation with both counties and and where the state, where we could move that, I would be all in favor. It it does need to be managed. And, you know, we do have some open meetings that are coming up. And we want to encourage customers, I want to go out and learn about wildfire, you know, readiness. You know, what should you be thinking about? I know I heard one of the council members talk about, you know, having only one direction out of your home in case there is a wildfire and how do I, you know, how do I evacuate? What does that mean? And so how do you as as a family prepare for the wildfire incident? So so we do have a number of cases, meetings that are coming up. Happy to encourage customers to attend and and learn about wildfire. So with that, let me stop and answer any other questions you might have.
Yeah, I got, I got a couple. One, well, thank, first, thank you for coming and presenting to us and and meeting with us. But as you know, development and economic development and and attracting new businesses into our industrial space is a priority to this, to bring in jobs to our community so that people aren't driving clear into Portland or an hour one way or another. What are, what is P G doing to get ahead of? Say, you you talked about power storage and stuff like that, but to improve substations and stuff like that, to be able to handle, say, the power requirements that are going to come with attracting more businesses into our, into our industrial zone and things like that as we're, as you see, we're growing as you sat and listened to. I mean, it's all over. And then also, I mean, I saw, I'll let you address that first, but I I saw up to sixty percent discount, which, you know, that's really cool, except for the fact that you just raised rates eighteen percent. You're getting ready to do another seven point three percent according to your slide, which is a twenty five percent just off the top of my head. So if we're talking in the difference that your average discount is, say, a fifteen percent or twenty percent, you've still done nothing, you've just brought our customer base back down to what it is. And that's not directed at you specifically, but P G generally. And I appreciate the fixed income consideration, of course, but I mean, we have hydro options and stuff like that right here. What what incentives for our community specific could we look at? So that, I mean, you're talking about pulling power from Montana, but what, what about right here?
Oh, great, great questions overall. And I think, again, the hardship of, you know, how, who do we help and how do we help? You know, that that's always been a great challenge in in terms of, you know, again, seniors, fixed income, et cetera. But let me, let me talk about the economic development. And for probably the last twenty, twenty five years, our growth has been a half percent to one percent a year. You know, you could plan for that, you could see it, you know, much like I'm sure, you know, water sewer doing the same thing. And so when there was a specific, you know, here comes a new mill or here comes a, you know, a new chip manufacturer or something into a a community. We had time, it took them usually about five, six years to build. And, you know, all through that process, we're getting ready, building out substations, pretty easy to do. We do have, I'll say, supply chain challenges right now. If I'm going to go after a new substation transformer, it used to be two years on an order. Now it could be up to four years. So we got to think ahead even further than than we did in the past. However, we were still building it in as of recent, even as we went to kind of our clean energy plans. Growth was starting to, the last few years is more like three to four percent. Okay, that's a, that's a step up. But it's not something you can't plan for and really do a good job. So if you're thinking about, you know, your area and for us to plan with you and think about, okay, a substation needs to go in here, we can get that done. I'm not afraid of that whatsoever. What I do worry a little bit about is some of the largers. And the largers we talk about now are data centers. So a data center looks, you know, kind of like an aluminum plant in the last century. It's a hundred megawatts drops in, they can build a box, they have it built in eighteen months, ready to go. Didn't have a whole lot of time. Hundred megawatts is bigger than, you know, trying to think of the total on Faraday, it's, it's like three Faraday's to to put in. And the nice thing about the aluminum industry is they have five potlines in there. You could shut off a potline and it was twenty megawatts to help the system. So we're trying to ask those same questions. But good news is, no data centers in this area that I'm aware of right now. They are across the, over on the west side and we're working through it. The good news about it is, gives us a chance, much like the aluminum industry did, to upgrade the system to really beef up. We've been living off of, because when the aluminum industry left in the nineties, we've had all this transmission. And again, I mentioned I've worked, I ran the, or Bonneville, had all this transmission in the Northwest with lots of capacity. It has been filled up with the chip manufacturers, et cetera, and just the growth that we've talked about. Now we've got to beat the system up again and take it to the next level. And and I'm approaching it with one, anything that's an existing line that I can reconductor or upgrade its voltage, do that first. Don't go building new lines anywhere because it's going to take you years and years to get through permits and everything else. You're disrupting somebody that doesn't have a line in their backyard today. So we're taking that approach with it as well. But to your, your point about normal growth here, we're ready for it. Love to do it. And if you've got some good ideas, love to talk to you.
Well, I just mean, if you look at like your, you referenced the west side, right? So you look at all these other people, they're up against their urban growth boundaries, they're out of capacity. I mean, it was discussed amongst us about how they have people in their staff that they have to turn down applications because they can't build, they're out of space, which is generating people that could potentially come here. So I guess more more directly, I mean, are we going to be able to get ahead of that so that we could handle that as it comes here, you know? Because really quickly, we could be in a scenario where that's filling up and power is a giant issue, so.
You've been in a good situation here, I'll just say, and and you're well prepared. I don't have any concerns whatsoever about the electrical system here. Unless you all of a sudden drop three data centers in next to you, then then I'd have a different conversation.
So you'd mentioned the rate, rate study has shown a seven percent increase coming up. Imagine from the rate study, you do the rate filing with the O P U C, the commission you'd referenced. Is that a slam dunk at that point?
Oh, no, heavens, no. We we go through, like I say, ten months of review. If the Citizens Utility Board, if you've watched any of, who are advocates for residential customers, they came out loud and clear and said, no, cancel that. I mean, in fact, they ought to just throw out the case altogether. Now, there's lots of issues associated with that. But what we would say is, no, that there's a fair process. It needs to be reviewed. If it's not prudent, it gets kicked out. And that's the process that goes through. So in this ten months, everything gets reviewed. Every line item for, you know, are we going to build that that road widening project? Are we going to do that transmission upgrade project? Are we going to do the new substation? All of those are questioned through that process. And and then the review of the power cost. You know, where are you buying your power from or how are you manu- manufacturing it? They will ask all those questions. So it's it's a healthy process and it's, and it's open, it's transparent. And many times, you know, you only get a portion of what you asked for.
So you don't just raise rates as as you want, you've got a somebody that you answer to.
And that's why, I, that's why I think everybody appreciates, there is a regulatory body. It's one body, it's not, you know, fifteen, it's, they're accountable, they're actually appointed by the governor and they're accountable. And 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 believe you or me, they ask a lot of really tough questions.
How much of P G's supply chain is dependent on countries that aren't friendly to the U S? Is that where some of the supply chain issues?
No, actually, actually, we, we, well, I shouldn't say that. I know we have some, there's some minor products that we do get out of China right now. But major transformers, you know, that are on the five hundred K V system, all of us have to go to either Europe or to Korea. Those are the two primaries to to get a transformer. Didn't even manufacture it in the United States any longer after about nineteen ninety. So, so you're right, but they're they're friendlies, but still hard. And then you have shipping issues to go along with it.
The overwhelming majority of the supply chain not domestic?
No, it's quite a bit domestic, but but there's, you're right. But it's kind of frustrating, you're going to do a project and all of a sudden you can't get a a small part. It happens to be an insulator or something that, and that holds up the whole project.
I just heard a lot of concerns about securing our grid. I see it on the news a lot and stuff like that. And I just think if if it takes that long to get a transformer, if there's ever an E M P attack or some sort of attack on our power grid and it, the lead times are that long, it's going to be, that's a dire situation if that doesn't get resolved pretty quickly. If ever there's an attack that impacts a large area, that population's going to be without power for a very long time if transformers are that backed up. Is there any, are they working to accelerate the supply?
They are right now. I mean, there's, there's been a lot of talk, we kept falling behind with, you know, the pandemic. But now we're trying to get back on track and trying to move as fast as we can because the demand is, you know, like threefold what it was before. And finally, you're seeing some of the domestic manufacturers starting to step up to the plate. It's great.
So you guys have done a lot of work. I don't know if you can answer this question on the spot or not, but on Faraday Lake, upgrading the dam there, upgrading the the area for the community to use, when do we get to see it? What's, what's the target open date?
So open date is October first.
All right.
So it is coming up. I wish it was a little bit sooner, but but that was the date that, I know Julie did some snooping around to say, okay, people want to know when this park's going to open up, but when are you guys going to commit to it? So so October first.
Awesome. Thank you. We're looking forward to it.
Yeah, one more, you you brought up the security thing. What what, what assurances do you have for us that we can protect our power grid locally? Like you were saying about those components that are sourced outside and stuff with A I and hacking, the things that we're seeing.
There's, it's always going to be a challenge. The way I think of the electric grid is, think about your home, you've got a breaker panel and you've got a bad circuit that flips the breaker, right? And you either go fix it, you isolate it, go find out what it is. Well, we have devices on our system in a similar way. And we have to be able to isolate where the problem is and go fix the problem, whether that's cybersecurity or physical security. What we do have to put in in our larger, you know, areas is the higher physical security as well as the cybersecurity. And I can think of a certain incident that was not far from here that the actually individual went in and they were on camera the whole time. They shot up some devices. And and I'll say, the good news is they didn't know what they were shooting because they shot the wrong parts. But had they shot the right parts, we would have had, you know, a significant incident on our hands. We do have spares and, you know, smaller units. We have mobiles, we actually can pull a mobile in. And so within, I'll say, twenty four hours or less, we can actually have that in, have it connected and, you know, re-energized for that area. So on the, on the distribution, the smaller levels, great. The larger, that's where it takes more time. And even if they did shoot up a transformer of that size, it takes you, could be up to ten days to get it moved out, new one in, re-energized up and running again. So so those are, those are the ones that keep me up at night as that behalf. And then also the cybersecurity, the advancements are, you're just trying to stay ahead of the bad guy.
Question about, you know, something that's, you know, more local. The, is there, and you might not even be able to answer this, but are there plans with the Three Links property to do anything up there or is it probably just going to get let go back to the forest? I know there was a lot of P G employees that lived up there for a long time before the fires and then fires came through and.
Yeah, and I was involved, I know it's, as the fires and we removed the buildings, et cetera. I can't answer what's planned, you know, if anything. I know we won't put employees back up and in the housing up there, but I can't say that we would, there wouldn't be some. Thinking about it, is it just returned or is there some recreational value? And those tend to fall under the licenses that we have or the watersheds. And and so that incorporates both recreational as well as protection of the environment.
There's just, there's a lot of history, you know, with that, you know, up up there and Three Links and a lot of the, just want to see, you know, that that history preserved in some way. Because that that is a part of our community, even though they're twenty six miles upriver. That's still part of the Estacada community and, you know, oh, there's a, you know, we we've been talking about, you know, the city, well, I started the conversation today about the city being established in nineteen oh five. And there, there's a lot of, a lot of talk about wanting oral history, you know, and, you know, I know that that's a hu, that's been a huge part of, you know, the community. that's a hu- that's been a huge part of, you know, the community for a lot of years and that's just not there anymore.
You know, if you've got any suggestions, by all means, so.
Let us know at this moment.
Yeah, that's why I say it just sometimes it it, people have thought through and they they come up with an idea and.
Just a, you know, Parker Park or campground would be, you know, great, something just to, you know, kind of memorialize, memorialize what what was there. And I I know that you guys have a hydro facility right there. And, you know, there's a lot of stuff that, you know, people wouldn't be able to have access to, but just something up there. I mean, the, when the the school got torn down, that was a, that most people didn't even know there was a school up there, you know. But yeah.
I didn't know there was a school up there.
Yeah, again, that's just, you know, part of the history of this city and just like to see it not lost.
Great suggestion. In fact, we'll take it back, but I, if you do have anything comes to mind at any time, please let us know.
I think that just about covered everybody. We appreciate your presentation.
Thanks for having us. We do appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. All right, we are now on council business. Second consideration ordinance two zero two four dash zero zero three and ordinance mending title two, administration and personnel of the city of Estacada municipal code related to city committees. So you've had this once, right? This is the second time?
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three.
Okay, motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, second here, we have a C M G C contract, which we discussed in detail. They did a great job. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I moved to approve the C M G C contract as presented.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much for that. We are now at the citizen and community group comment, second time around. Do I have any comments? Shirley, okay, Shirley, if you want to step up to the mic, please.
I, I am the one that presented the the thing for Becky. I'm not from, see, I get Becky and the Christmas stuff. But anyway, a sign of old age. Anyway, I'm the one that presented the Chris Nelson plaque for the park. I don't know if any of you guys know, but I got up at one or two in the morning and went out with Chris to find a damn dog or cat. She did a hell of a lot of community work in this town. And everybody that I've talked to, in fact, somebody said, why don't we do a petition to get a memorial plaque put on that dog park for Chris? Because Chris tried to get a dog park in the back of the park before she got sick, she wanted to do that. And I think it would be a really sad, sad thing if you guys did not approve that just because you think somebody might not want to go in the park because she's dead. That's not untrue, that's not true in this town. Everybody loved Chris Nelson. And I mean, she went, she helped me get my dog out one day and y'all nobody. But she could get him because he had taken off and he was scared and I wasn't around. But I think it would be a shame if you guys don't approve this. And I know there's a lot of people that would be upset and they're ready to petition it in, just like we did the memorial bench at the skate park. We will petition to get it in. Thank you.
I think it was approved already.
We got to prove it.
Yeah, you walked out during the time we.
A memorial plaque there for her, yeah.
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 No, no, you went out for lunch and we decided on that one.
It'll be nice. It'll be nice.
It's okay, Shirley. We're we're on it. It's all right. We miss a few things now and again, and trust me, I'm with you.
We don't want any problems, Shirley.
Yeah, that's right. You had me scared. All right, next.
Good evening. Tom, last time I addressed the body, you've got to see a side of me that hardly anybody gets to see. So with assuredly, that chink in my armor has now been replaced and I'm moving on. Great questions for P G E from all of you. Michael, I like the way you were on it. You keep asking really good questions because I've got major concerns about E and E M Ps and whatever it's going to take out or not. But my my concern tonight is now we're into an election season. And Portland's getting serious about taking out camping in the city, which means they're going to go elsewhere. Rather nice, beautiful place. I just urge some conversation about what could possibly mean to the city, what contingency plans might be created to.
Is that mic working? It's saying I can't hear it up there.
Somebody turned it off. You can hear my.
Oh, yeah, we can hear your voice, but we need to hear it on the mic for the recording. There you go.
We'll give you some more time.
Give us a test.
Put some more time on your clock.
Just got to be smarter than the mic.
All right.
I have a problem with that. So anyway, that is my concern. I had a lot of concerns from the last time I I had spoke to you. But with everything going on in Portland now, the beds that they have or the space that they have is going to fill up pretty quickly. And of course, people are going to go to Milwaukee, Oregon City. But I've already kind of seen in my traveling, going to work and whatnot, I'm seeing an uptick of the migration out and out this way. So I just hope that 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 you're thinking of what could possibly happen come summertime here, because this, there's a lot of those folks that know that this is a beautiful place and and they could probably get away with a lot out here if they wanted to try. So that's what I had to say.
All right, appreciate that. All right, that's all I have tonight, so we'll go on to mayor and council reports and comments. Jerry.
I've been, I've been so amazed every, every meeting, just the, the conversations, the questions that we're asking. I I've walked away from every meeting, you know, more educated, knowing more about certain things than that I never thought I would know. And I really appreciate the conversations and the questions that are being asked from this council. And I just want you to know, I really appreciate all the work that everybody here puts in. It's it's pretty awesome. It's it's great to see from my, from my standpoint. Hopefully y'all are seeing the same thing. Thank you, city staff, for another great packet. There's a lot of stuff and a lot of, that was a lot of hearings, public hearings.
There's that specificity.
Hey, you've gotten so much better over the years with that word, just saying. Again, I know I said it earlier, just want to, just want to keep that seed planted. We are coming up on hundred and twenty years of Estacada. You know, maybe plant the seed in your, in your community groups if they put on events, not community groups, your commissions and, you know what I'm saying? If they put on any community events, plant the seed to maybe include something next year about one twenty. And then, and then hopefully, you know, one twenty-five moving forward, we we make it big, we make it something. We can do small stuff next year and and just do something big all year long for one twenty-five. I think that's a a great thing to celebrate every year that we're, you know, every year that we're still here, that we're not burned down is a great time to celebrate. But I think those milestones, we need to put a little bit of emphasis on. And it's just another way to bring the community together. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, just thanks to everybody that came out tonight. Appreciate the council. We always have great conversations and it's, it's really cool to be able to combat or to come together and amongst differences and everything like that, still be able to get what's best for our community done. So I just want to say thank you to each of you guys individually. I appreciate it. To city staff, thank you for your work. Melanie, it's been incredible. I've watched the social media stuff getting better and better and more current. And I appreciate that. None of my criticisms for you are personal. These are just things that are being asked in the community as far as from a safety standpoint on certain things like addressing the mayor and things like that. So it didn't just come from him. I've heard it from other people as well. So that's why I came to you. One thing I forgot to mention earlier that I would just like you to consider. I know that Dawn had said he's got the adhesive to do crosswalks and stuff like that for Campanella and other places. Campanella specifically, you said to wait until they connect the road or something like that. I would just ask that you maybe consider if that road gets held up, like we're already seeing the later process that maybe we get the crosswalks installed sooner. It's it's an issue for people to walk through that that community. Other than that, I just want to say thank you guys again, and I appreciate you greatly.
Uh, thank you, everybody. It was eight hundred and thirteen pages for all of our packets for tonight. And imagine how difficult it is for us to go through it, how much work it is to put it together. I really appreciate it. It's very thorough. It gives me a good understanding of everything. Well, from the presentation from P G E tonight, it looks like we should encourage people to write the Oregon Public Utility Commission about the hardships that the increase would would create for people. And it it wouldn't be just for seniors and low income. Everybody's struggling in one way or another. But yeah.
Just want to thank everybody that made it out tonight and encourage everyone to, you should have got your primary ballots in the mail and make sure to get those in. And I hear a lot of people complaining about the way things are going. And if you're just staying silent and not letting your voice be heard at the ballot box, stop complaining. So if you want to see change, then vote for change, whatever way you want to vote, just get out and let your voice be heard. I would say maybe reconsider if you're not getting the outcomes that you want from the people that you continue to vote on. Maybe consider changing that and maybe things will change. So thanks, everyone, for coming out.
I just want to thank, thank, you know, everyone for the great prep work for today and discussion too. And then thanks for, to the city staff for the work put into the packets and then also making yourself available that we can come to you with questions, concerns, things like that, whether it's, you know, why change a zone or or, you know, what kind of pipes are needed, you know, for things? And then being able to get back to us on that, I think that helps with the evenings and conversations to appreciate the availability and and helping us out through that. Otherwise, thanks. Missed you guys last week. Really appreciate you voting in the six o'clock start time. That is awesome. Thank you.
All right, Jerry.
Oh, do we need to do that for the next meeting? Do we need to?
No, we did it.
It was the reservation. That takes care of it.
Okay, good.
So the nice thing about going second to last is that you guys already said all of the great things that I don't need to say. So just want to thank everybody for coming out who was able to make it tonight. The presentations went smoothly. Alan's not here, but I wanted to thank him because I know he's have, you know, having to step in since Taylor's not here and having to do the lion's share of the work. So appreciate him kind of, you know, sticking his neck out there and appreciate all the good talk and discussion. And yeah, like Counselor McElroy said, please go out and vote and do your research on your candidates. Yeah, just really, really just dig in. And like you said, if you don't like the way things are going, maybe, you know, need to look at changing, changing your vote. So that's all I'm going to say on that. But appreciate everyone and good discussion tonight.
Got a couple things. First off, we've reached a, a point here in our council where the mayor doesn't need to say anything anymore. The council's already covered everything. That's how well they're versed, and that's because of city staff. I appreciate that. I find myself coming up empty because everything I want to say, they've already covered. That was a a good point to get to when you're a mayor, when your council understands the process, when they understand everything in front of them and the things that they're going to have to answer to, and they do it. I commend you on that. I commend staff for making that possible. On another note, the last citizen that came up said we're going to be looking at a problem of people coming up in here and camping. Now, I was just down on Lake Shore today. I patrol it every week, twice a week, like clockwork. But today I went down there and they've actually carved out the hillside and created these little alcoves in the side of the cliff to live on. And they've got a stove down there. They've got everything. We're hitting a crucial point here where we need to sit down with P G E and not because it's on city property, but it's right there. And and they're coming from our city and going down there and creating these little camps. We've got to change that. So I recommend that we get P G on the table, council on the table, create ordinances, get these things in place and stop this from happening, or we're going to ruin this area that we have down there before we even get it redone. So I ask that you consider that in an upcoming meeting, maybe setting up a meeting with P G E, maybe the Forest Service, whoever we need to, to look at this strategically so that we can get ahead of this before it becomes even worse than it is now. So that said, I thank all of you tonight and I appreciate your time. So see you next time. And this meeting isn't.